Okay, we're gonna call the city council meetings ordered Monday, March 8th, 7:00 P.M. Vote call?
David Paradise.
Nicole Andrew.
Barry Mina.
Tom Marrow.
Dan Solars.
Justin Lywell.
Sam Ketchum.
Daniel Alder.
Jared Bogey.
Will Corwin.
Justin Alwood.
Uh, invocation, Patrick Paul. That is great. Lord, we want to thank you for everyone gathered here this evening. You have entrusted us with your work here in this world that you have given us. And we want to pray for these officials tonight who serve us in every way they can. Grant us all the wisdom, the patience, the work in harmony, even when we may disagree. Give us all a thirst for justice and righteousness. We want to pray for each of the items on the agenda tonight that we will deal with and pray that the decisions that are made will reflect your wisdom in this world in which you have given us. May all that we do, all that we say glorify your name in the love that you have shared with us. Amen. All, please rise from the platitudes. Platitude, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under thy, indivisible, omnipotent, and eternal. Okay, uh, moving on to the approval of the agenda. We have a couple of things. One thing we're gonna add, one thing we're gonna move. Uh, the fire department and emergency management are going to move to seven A and seven B. Right after the approval of the consent agenda. And then, uh, number eight will be Mike Cashmark, county commissioner. And then everything else will just change afterwards after that. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as a matter of fact. I have a second. Further discussion on the agenda? David?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
All vote yes. Tom?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Approval of the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll second that. Uh, is there any further discussion on the approval of the consent agenda? Sam?
Aye.
Um, aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
All vote yes. Motion passes five zero. Uh, fire department and emergency management.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, passion, your package is our monthly activity report for February. Um, twenty calls, twenty days, we go on to the one. Um, we had one in a fairly decent structure fire, um, on the twenty-seventh in February. Um, other than that, if there's any questions related to the activity report, you answer them. The only other thing on the agenda for the fire department is recognition of, um, awards that we gave out last Tuesday. Um, so we gave out, uh, our twenty-twenty top responder award. Every year we give out awards to, uh, people who respond to sixty percent or more of our calls. Those, uh, people were Mike Markkinen with eighty-five point seven percent, Billy Bowersmith with eighty-four point seven percent, Diane Holman with eighty-two point nine percent, Joey Tyce with seventy-four point three percent, myself with sixty-six point two percent, and Kelly Stoll with sixty-one point ninety-two percent. And then we also, uh, pinned a firefighter after they got probation, we pinned a firefighter. Um, Joel Ray successfully completed his probation period, so he was pinned by his father and grandfather. And then we gave out the firefighter of the year award. This is, uh, we have a nomination committee of firefighters and they select, um, a firefighter on our rosters who, um, kind of above and beyond for a given year. And they selected me for that award this, for twenty-twenty. So, um, that was greatly appreciated to be recognized by my peers and stuff, uh, in passing that I've been working, so. There's no other questions, uh, fire department side. We move to emergency management. Do we have anything really? I know the city staff, uh, had a quire about opening up the doors.
Yeah, we would like to open up, uh, city hall doors, so if I like again.
Yep, and I, I feel as long as the staff and council are okay with it, we should be able to do it as long as we have the mask rule in effect. And we can try to limit the number of people in the entryway, so keeping the sign up so that there's not six, seven, eight people. And then trying just to limit people in there for business-related purposes, not just, uh, gavel and chit-chat and stuff, just so we can limit the amount of time that people are in there. So that would be my recommendations for emergency management.
Is that just okay?
I don't believe in a motion or not, because most of you guys are all getting that.
Any else? Thanks, Kevin. Urban council. Uh, county commissioner, Mike Cashmark.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
There, thanks for the time tonight. I am Mike Cashmark, elected Drake County Commissioner for District Five. And for those that don't know where District Five is, it's from the east side of Delmo to the west side of Calcutta. So it's nine townships and five cities. I'm just trying to make the rounds and a little introduction, but so I'm trying to make contact with cities and townships, but there's a lot of them. So everyone wants Monday and Tuesday meetings and we're trying to do the best we can to get to them all. But, uh, this, a little bit, this mainly affects cities more so than townships, but we're finally getting the PDA going, the Economic Developmental Authority. It's a couple of years of work before I got elected, but it'll affect the cities that choose to wanna participate in it. And you'll be getting a, a written notice to see if you want a presentation from the committee on what this means for cities. So mainly it's, uh, to help you if you wanna get businesses to your community, having this, uh, authority behind your city with the company in partnership, you can do that more easily. So first you'll get the notice, if you want a formal presentation, we'll come out and do that. But I didn't want the cities and townships to feel like it's gonna be forced to find anyone to participate if you wish, instead of just saying we're gonna come and do the presentation whether you want it or not. So watch for that to be coming in the future. Uh, we're also dealing with the, the solar farms and the ordinance. We're trying to refine that based on the past five years. That's something that's ongoing, but, uh, we're trying to narrow that down. And that's why there's a moratorium on solar farms. Uh, another thing to just bring attention to is winter meetings, right? A lot of people don't know when a meeting, that you can go in person or watch it later. But, uh, fact is, you can go up to a board meeting Tuesday mornings, ninety on at the government center, or you can watch it live on the website or later when it's posted on YouTube. I'd really encourage you to do that so you can see what your commissioners are up to and what's going on in county business. That's really the best way. But you are sure free to go up there in person, there are people that do that. First meeting, I tried to make a motion for some alternative meeting nights, to have some, maybe one a month in the evening, but the other commissioners aren't in favor of that for their own reason. But when I was campaigning, I told the constituents I wanted it, that I've tried for, so we'll try again in the future. But otherwise, I wanna be good listening here and a voice for the people. I spoke into the mayor, uh, if there's any resources that you think you could use from the, at the Drake County level. Sometimes we have a, a little bar, just give a hold of me, I'm up at the office. Almost every day it's a full-time job, don't let anyone kid you. And, uh, I'm giving it the time and effort that it deserves. So I know you got a long agenda tonight, a lot of concerned people here wanna talk and listen to some other things besides me. Any questions from the council? All right, thanks again, look forward to working with you.
Thanks, thank you. Okay, uh, we'll move on to open forum. Uh, right before we take the questions, uh, I'd like our engineer, Jared, to kinda answer some of the questions that we've got as a council beforehand. Um, you may answer your question before you ask it. Uh, these are just a list of fifteen, twenty questions that have either been given to me or other council members and we pass them on to Jared. Um, just kinda have for tonight. Um, so if you wanna kinda take it away?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, just for some background relative to the letter I've sent out into the manganese. Um, ultimately, the manganese is a naturally occurring element located within rocks and soils, uh, definitely in Minnesota and, uh, throughout the country. So it's not unique to the city of Montrose. The manganese levels vary across the state. Uh, so recently, the Department of Health started doing some testing for manganese in water supplies. Magnesium is not a regulated item, uh, it's not required to be tested for, and as a result of some EPA guidance and regulations, uh, the Department of Health started doing some testing. So, um, back in, I think it was August, May, summer, the Department of Health did some testing on the city's water supply. Then in fall, they provided, uh, those results. And ultimately, the results exceed what the EPA or the Department of Health refers to as a health-based value or guidance value for manganese. So along with the results, they recommended that the city inform the customers of the results and do that as part of the consumer confidence report, which comes out typically , uh, late, early, beginning of May sometime in that time frame. Council, uh, did want to send those results out earlier and that result crafted that letter and got it in the public's hands, uh, to identify what the test results were that came back from the Department of Health and then also, um, identify, you know, what some next steps might be. In addition to sending the letter, um, council also authorized a report to investigate both short-term, midterm, and long-term, uh, next steps, if you will, to what the city might be doing to address the, um, the manganese levels that are in the water. And again, it's, it's naturally occurring, it's not regulated, but, um, ultimately, there are some guidelines out there for those suggested guidance values that, uh, definitely wanna get an angle on. So, um, as part of the report, report process, uh, city is collaborating with the Department of Health, which ultimately, in terms of the city as the regulatory agency, right? Um, they have the, the values of the guidance levels that, that the city operates under. And so collaboration with them, in addition, although the city is not required to test for manganese, um, city is testing twice a month, uh, for those values. There's not a lot of data points, uh, prior to the tests are done with the Department of Health. So this testing will provide those, that information so we can identify any trends that occur, um, where those values fluctuated among the, among the water, uh, system. So we'll continue to collaborate with, uh, the Department of Health and, um, look for completing that report this summer and providing counsel with, again, those short-term, midterm, and long-term next steps forward that are, are based to, uh, manganese.
Thanks, Jared. Um, okay, um, I'll call the names and then you come up and state your questions. Um, you have three minutes. Everybody has three minutes to talk, spare all around the board. Um, and please refrain from shouting out in the audience. Um, it can be distracting, the person talking, and some people have issues with public speaking and it just makes it worse. So, uh, please be courteous of others if you can. Uh, Kim Niska. Can you just state your name and address to include her?
Sure, my name's Kim Niska, and I live at five two three Second Street South, um, just down from the water tower. Um, as you guys probably are aware, there were several people that, um, were quite concerned when, once they received the letter, I was one of them. Um, there were some questions that came about and I sent, um, a couple of questions to the mayor and then again to, um, the engineer. Um, I just would like to ask a few questions if I may. Um, so where are you at with the resolution on this? I know you kinda spoke with, spoke about it a little bit, but, um, and where, do we need funding for it? And if we don't get funding from, from, say, the government, who has to pay for that?
Yeah, certainly I can. Uh, so where we're at in the process is we're gathering the data that is available, uh, working on that report and to identify, again, the short-term, midterm, and long-term, um, potential steps forward. Currently, uh, there's not a specified funding source associated with, with the manganese because, because again, it's a, um, a guidance value, so it's not a regulated value, which is, um, it's frustrating because ultimately, the burden of anything done to take, remove manganese from the water, if that's the, the problem that this has, uh, bears on the consumers of that resource. So ultimately, the rate payers, um, now, as, as the process moves forward, similar to other projects, we'll pursue any funding mechanisms out there. Um, city has used, uh, things like Public Facilities Authority, things of that nature. Um, but at this point, that's all being investigated at this time.
Okay, so in a nutshell, the taxpayers will bear the burden, if, if maybe?
Historically, that's the way it goes.
Okay, all right. Um, how long will it take to remediate the issue, um, once the funding and costs are envoys? Do we have any idea? Like how long this could last because people are needing to get water and maybe filtration systems to make sure that they can, you know, remain completely healthy? Or is someone healthy?
Yeah, the timeline, I, I don't think is, is concrete at this point, but, uh, definitely working towards that and hopefully by the, by the summer, we'll have an idea of what those timeframes associated with short-term, midterm, and long-term, uh, next steps forward. At this point, I'd love to, I'd love to provide a timeline for you, but without doing that analysis, I don't mean speculating, I don't wanna do that.
Okay, very good. Um, in the letter, it stated that, um, three wells were tested and range was between four twenty-three and fourteen fifty PPD, which is quite high. Um, are there more than three wells in, in the town of Montrose?
Well, there's only three.
Pardon?
There's only three.
There's only three, every well?
Yes.
And can we have the, the measurements of all three wells rather than just an average here so we can see where the larger amounts of PPD are?
They put a, a handout on the table that has the test results of all wells.
So the wells are all blended together, so you're gonna get an average, you're not gonna get ones at like fourteen and ones at say nine.
Okay.
It's blended together, so it's confirmed that I don't know.
Okay.
And they're always blended.
All right, well, it's also a memory, that's all.
Thanks, Cam.
Thank you. I have more, but I'll be over.
Uh, so, Dwayne, there, 'cause this was a question that was brought up, uh, by somebody as well, that do the certain wells serve a certain areas or do they all go in one spot and then it goes off in there?
They all go out, the two of them go out in one spot and the third goes over here on Third Street, but they're all getting blended together because they rotate and they, all the excess goes to whichever tower's closest there. So it's always blended before it goes down, unless there's a big demand out or it's all gonna come out in one spot. But the nearest well is the most far. But by the time it gets through the system, it's all blended.
Uh, Drake Humans.
I was just gonna offer some history and reference to the capital improvement of the plan. If you want that, I can, otherwise I don't have any, any specific questions.
You have three minutes of yours if you want, although I didn't move on.
Just wanted to bring that back in two thousand fifteen with Sean Birdstein, when I was serving the mayor, we looked at the issue of manganese in the water and the fact that it was high. It was not a requirement to be removed, still is not. Um, however, there have been lots of studies that have happened since then and there have been EPA guidance that's come out to raise some, some bells and whistles that, that need to be addressed. At that time, we put it on the capital improvement plan as a five to seven million dollar project to build a water treatment plan. And we engaged Bolden Mink to look at PFA funding, uh, to see if state would provide that. The issue was the Water Quality Association did not get, view that as a requirement to be removed, which was an issue. But given the Department of Health standards now that have been changed since then, maybe something the Water Quality Administration may be looking at and may be able to get priority funding, uh, as opposed to intended use funding for PFA. And that may be something I may explore as well to see where that funding might come from. Uh, I just wanted to bring that historical background on.
Thanks, Greg. Uh, Barry Roach, Roach. Sorry if I butchered your name.
Roach, all right.
Where at?
Barry Roach, um, one fifteen Hill Street. Um, can we shower, can we bathe with this water?
Yes, you can.
Okay, safe, I mean, okay. Um, you say this falls on us for having to replace or all repairs. You know, I bet I'm no different than ninety-five percent of the people in this city. I can't afford three to five thousand dollars for replacing my water softener, coming up with alternate water supply, you know, living off of bottled water until it gets figured out. How are we supposed to do that? I mean, take out a home loan and have our whole water system cleaned up? I mean, we don't have a timeline for when this may be rectified. Are we gonna live off of bottled water?
According to the Department of Health, short-term isn't gonna hurt anybody. It's long-term, longer term as well as gonna affect somebody. They're not sure really how it affects anybody. That's why it hasn't been regulated, they're just getting.
Take that chance? I mean, I got grandchildren to move, you know? Do we pay them and this stuff without them, without worrying about that?
Yes.
Cooking, coffee, the waters.
Yep. The only thing I worry about is younger kids, under a year old, getting high levels.
Okay, well, back to saying water softener, the stuff's already gone through our system.
Water softeners will remove some of it.
Some of it, okay, but not enough, okay. The filters don't, so what are we supposed to do? Go out and get a whole new system?
Done.
Put in a, a safe water drinking system at the castle in the kitchen?
That would be on you, we can't recommend anything.
Well, it's your guy's water supply, okay, granted, it's gone over time. I mean, so I guess we gotta take out a home loan to repair all the stuff from what the water has done.
Short-term is not gonna hurt anybody.
Well?
Is what they're telling me.
You can say it's short-term, midterm, long-term. You know, you know, is there a clue yet for how long this might? I mean, the numbers, you know, the numbers say, I have not a clue what these numbers mean. You know, I'm just at a loss. I mean, I got all this, it gotta come out of my pocket. I must fix it and come out and just do it. So I can't afford a whole new water system.
So if I might, I, what I did is I went and bought a zero water, water filter, it cost me thirty dollars and it takes out ninety-nine point nine percent of manganese. That's me personally signing that, not as a representative of the council.
It's a what, what type?
It's a zero water, zero water is what it's called.
Okay, well, that's, okay, you got something on this.
So that's helping.
I can't afford coffee and cooking and all that stuff, you know, that's what we're here for. So it'd be safe, but we should be drinking bottled water for a moment.
That's up to you. Yeah, it's really up to you.
Stacy Johnson?
Now.
Mike Johnson? Mike Johnson? Uh, Jeremy Osterbauer? All right, give him a buzz.
What's that, Osterbauer? Got one question for the engineer. I am Jeremy Osterbauer from one twenty Hill Street. I've been doing water treatment for twenty-one years now. Um, the problem is what made me is worrying. You have a problem trying to strip that out in these homes before it gets to our, to our softeners and to our drinking waters. So what are we gonna do about that? Are we gonna filter that?
Yeah.
Because I know the cost. I mean, I've been doing water treatment for twenty-one years now and, uh, you know, the cost is extent to the consumer. So you're just basically letting us know that the water treatment companies are the ones to take care of this?
No, I think that, that's not the intent at all. Ultimately, um, as a city develops its path forward, one of the options definitely is water treatment. Now, that's an expensive option and you're absolutely correct with your statement. Um, the only way that you can get manganese out is to filter it out.
Yep.
So, again, as, as stated previously, it's completely up to the resident, um, what type of system they use, whether it's a filter or, or if they feel that they even need to ultimately.
It's up to the consumer. I know that doing, doing water treatment for twenty-one years, it is. That's all the city's gonna do is sanitize it, take the trees and the frogs out pretty much, you know, and then give us the water. So that's what my question was. Thank you.
Lloyd Johnson?
I'm sixty-four oh five State Avenue, twenty-five Southwest, Bay of Montrose. Um, I was gonna say, how long has this water been tested? How long have we known about the magnesium in the water?
The results from the Department of Health are this August.
You mean, we just found out about it, none of this last few weeks?
Well, it's, it's always been.
Yeah, I know, but why didn't somebody take care of it before it got so big that now we got a problem?
There's nothing you can do.
So I think that.
Well, I could have looked in the filtration, uh, test down there.
That's what we're doing right now.
You are gonna do that?
Well, we're looking into it.
Well, don't look into it, you better do it. And I was gonna say, because we pay good taxes in this money and in this community and everything else. And another thing, uh, I don't know either how much it costs, I didn't have a chance to do that. But now, I've tried to, I've checked the call again, if I have to get a water machine in there and so forth, it's gonna cost me about fifty dollars a month. Now, are you guys gonna reimburse me the fifty dollars a month?
I, I mean, that'd be a discussion for the council as a whole, but I think that if we reimburse every person in town, we, as a city, would go bankrupt or taxes would go sky high.
Our city won't go bankrupt with all the money you guys are spending. Our city won't go bankrupt with all the money you guys are spending, with all these transitions and promotions and so forth. How much raise did you get?
That's not what we're discussing. We're not talking about that. That's not what we're talking about.
That's money, that's the city money, the taxpayers' money.
The truth and all that.
Now we're asking for something. You guys don't care about the residents.
Lloyd, we're residents too. We're doing the exact same thing that everybody else is.
That's not my problem, that's the city's problem. They let it get that high, they should have never looked at that.
So this was brought up to the council in 2016 and they voted five to zero to put a water treatment plant on the long-term solution to the city of Mantras. And at the time, it was quoted in the minutes, because I looked through all the minutes last night from 2016 through 2018, it said between five and six, seven million was the estimate that they gave. And the council at the time, that was their solution, was to put that on there. There was nothing else that was done at that time other than to put it on the PPL and apply for PFA. And the PFA was denied by the state.
Yeah, but can't you blame the city engineers for that? Now you say the new well out there also is contaminated or whatever. The new well out there is the same problem out there.
Well number six out there...
Yes, I know. I've had three months.
Well number six that was recently discussed is the lowest level of manganese of all of them.
So you didn't do anything about it, so now we spent all that money for a new well and that's as bad as the old ones?
Lloyd, especially the old.
Manganese is a naturally occurring element, so it varies depending on where you're at in the state. And the city of Mantras aquifer that we draw water from has elevated levels of manganese, similar to other communities throughout the state. So ultimately, unless you move to a different part of the state and pump the water, it's difficult to find a, find a spot in that same aquifer that doesn't have similar manganese levels.
Yeah, but we didn't do anything else. We could have put a filtration deal on that new one, put a new one.
A water treatment plant is different than a well.
Okay, how about a filtration plant down in the plant? For the holes in it?
Can you repeat that question? I didn't understand.
Filtration down in the plant where the water all goes through?
That, that's the wastewater plant, it has nothing to do with the drinking water.
Put on the wells in it, is that how they do it, put in filtration? I heard this is what they do.
Yeah, that's, that's what the mayor indicated, that that project was put on the PPA.
Now you're asking the taxpayers to get a filter and put in at their expense.
No, I, I don't think that the city is requesting residents to do that. They pointed it out on the option.
Somebody must have figured something was important to send all those letters out to all residents.
Lloyd, we do have to move on to the next person.
What?
So we do have to move on to the next person. If you have more questions, you can email to Jared, Wayne, anyone else in council and we will get back to you then.
You know, it's kind of ironic that you guys, when it comes something for the residents, oh, gee, the money is a big issue. But now you're going to make some changes in this. I had enough money, fuel and stuff, but for most of it. So you're going to move these people around and give them big wages? Maybe we shouldn't have done that. Maybe we should have spent that money helping the citizens out.
Three minutes are up.
Yes, three minutes are up. We do have to move on. If you want to talk about it later, we can, but we have to move on to the next person, so everybody just can't stop.
Okay, can I get back up later then?
We can talk about it after the meeting if you'd like.
Well, you can't answer it anyway.
Okay, please sit down, Lloyd.
Anyway, I think it's pretty low.
Chris, me and...
Not, we're just not talking to Chris.
You said you're passing Chris?
Yes.
Okay. Dustin Shindel.
Shut down. Shut down, there you go. Hi, if you'll excuse me, I'm very involved in the speaker. My name's Dustin Shindel, I'm going to my anxiety, it's been a little bit. I'm not here to discuss the water, although it is very important to us. I'm here to discuss the proposal to extend steamboats. As it stands right now, from what I understand, is that you guys are trying to regret for paint hoses back there with requests from the builder to try and not get on the call. When it was originally proposed for...
Can you take your mask off so we can hear you?
When it was originally proposed, we're wondering why? Why would every single one of us buy our homes with a lot size? Is that what proposed back there? Why? First thing first, is there a written plan available to the public that shows this was being proposed?
There was, there was a public hearing held at the February 10th, planning zoning commission meeting. And a letter was sent to all of the property owners, that's where you had to come and comment on, on the development.
Yep, I understand that, I missed that here, so I'm here too. Along with every single signature, from Steamboat, a lot from Aspen, a lot from Loveland Circle. A lot of them, they didn't see that letter. In fact, one person here, in fact, it was only not one person that said, yeah, yeah, I know what they're talking about. So our questions are, is what, why are we going, why are we going with 14?
The applicant wanted to do 14, that's what they proposed and that's what they submitted to the city. Obviously, the city has the responsibility to review the application as, as they put it and to decide whether or not they want to allow that via the PUD zoning designation that they applied for. As of right now, based upon the planning and commission's feedback, they have gone from 14 to 12. They'll have to look at that at the next planning, or city council meeting.
Okay. Will there be another opening?
There were not, well, unless the city council wishes a different form, they are not required to have another public hearing on this because it's substantially different to the original proposal. The applicant has totally the planning commission's feedback and has decided to change the plan and go to the city council for that.
Is this the first builder developer that came in and gave you guys an offer?
The city is just beholden to whoever comes into the property and puts in and develops.
So even if it's not what citizens want?
The reason why, if they had come in with nine homes to add a proposal, then they would have gotten made able to go to a final flat and then they would have been able to go to the city council for approval on that if they had come in with nine homes. What they proposed is 14 homes via a zoning MPV.
Yep. Why rezoning? Why do that?
That is what the applicant put in, is up to the city council to act upon the application.
Don't you feel like that's going to diminish our property values by putting in smaller properties right behind us, by putting in cheaper homes right behind us?
That is a policy decision that the city council would have to be there based upon what the developer has put in for the application.
Okay, so I did listen to the last meeting, the last meeting that was held up here and there was legitimate concerns brought up, and I don't know who brought them up, I wish I would have known it yesterday. One of the concerns was fire department. Right now, as it is right now, it'd be tough for the fire department to access in and out of Steamboat as it is right now, let alone if you extend it down another 200 yards, let alone put another 14 houses back there, let alone another 28 vehicles, most of them being parked up the street. What about trash? If you've lived on a Steamboat lane, you know that the trash, that has to go all the way down, back all the way up to the cul-de-sac that we have right now, turn around, back all the way back up, trash up on the opposite side, it's, it's annoying for them. And it's just going to be worse. And snow, snowing over two is a horrible situation on that street. The fact that we're putting in 14 homes with no public.
Dan, we do have to go on to the next person, but I can tell you that as a city council, we denied their application for 14.
14, you asked, you asked for 12, you asked for them to go and reevaluate for 12. Still do not think of when the original nine was plotted there, when all of us bought our properties, that's how we intended this development to be finished, and a through street. A through street so we don't have to bear the burden of all the vehicles coming in and not one out there. It's unfair to anybody who's bought a house on that street for you guys just to change the rules on us. Drainage, drainage on, on Loveland Circle in their backyard sucks right now. You know, you plateau off the top of that property, where is the drainage going to go? More into their backyards. What is the city going to do to help them with that?
Those, those are the questions for the engineer, but like I said, we do have to move on because there is a couple of people that do have questions on this exact same subject.
That'd be great, that'd be great, because I'd like to hear their questions and your answers with that. Thank you for letting me talk.
Yeah, if you want to talk more afterwards, I mean, we have our plan here, the engineers here, and, you know, Wayne, I don't know if the fire department, the fire team is still here, but I mean, any of those questions you have, I mean...
Can I bring up one more thing? When I was listening to that, when I was listening to you guys' last speech, I actually heard, I don't know who was from the fire department, but, but it was brought up that it would be hard to access down the one way, down to Dead End Street with the fire department. He actually said, we have so many dead ends in Mantras that what's one more?
That means one more.
That's, what's one more? We can navigate those dead ends, what's one more? Why? Why won't we have other problems throughout the city? Do we constantly make another one?
Do it smart.
Develop it right, let's do it smart.
In regards to the dead ends, what that's in terms of in particular with the planner, the developer, the engineer, those are temporary ones, which there's always going to be temporary dead ends that we, they're just going to happen because we can't build every developmental street throughout every area right after the dead end. So the way that that one's proposed currently is that's temporary.
14 years for this development.
Correct.
What's a couple more? We've been able to continue Steamboat truly, it was supposed to, rather than funnel everybody out, the one in this section. Is there proper plans to push it through 12? I don't think we can. Is there plans to connect it to, to the other Steamboat? I'm sorry.
We'd like to ask that we can answer more of your questions later too and go over in detail, so we have no problem talking now.
Thank you.
Carol Sheep.
Hi, I'm Carol Sheep, I live in 950 Steamboat. Have to bear with me, I don't know very much about city politics, but I just want to understand what, basically what motivation would you have for preventing this development going through as it is? How would you be able to very strongly not go through as proposed for this, I guess, 12 development? So is it just the developer gives you a plan, you can decide yes or no, but if nobody else offers to develop it differently, you have no reason to tell them no? Is our voice going to come here? Are concerned of our property values, of our kids? Our Steamboat lane is a very nice neighborhood, there's little kids everywhere all the time, wonderful. We all bought our homes with this situation. And I kind of want to know if I should sell my house because I have a two-year-old and baby and it's not going to be a through street. It's not going to be safe for us anymore. There's going to be 12 more homes than a dead end without a through street. I mean, we bought it, no way I'm going to make a through street someday, that's completely fine. But it's going to be a dead end. Like Dustin's completely correct, the way that the garbage man has to operate is ridiculous. And it would be a hundred times worse, they don't know how he can do it. The mail truck can barely turn around there. So basically, is it, is it going to matter what they call this?
I, I think everyone's opinion matters and I'm glad that some of you showed up when they did, when they had that before them with the planning zoning. And Chuck and I have talked a few times about this and everyone's concerns. And, you know, from my understanding of it all, the, they own that property right now and then but the other side of them where the road would go through is privately owned, right? And so they would have to purchase that property and then put it through, which I believe is their plan, but they want to get these houses up, make their money on it, and then extend it from there. So, I mean, we, everyone understands your concern on it with how narrow it can be and I know that they've tried to work with Daniel about trying to make it better and increasing lot sizes and less houses. And we haven't even, I mean, they've sent us the proposal, but we haven't, I mean, we haven't taken a vote on it, we haven't even talked about it, the council, what the next step is or what we're going to do. So, I mean, I know that Dustin had brought up possibly doing another open house, you know, and that's a possibility. It's just, you know, bringing the engineers out and inviting all you guys out again, but it just, that hasn't been talked about where we're going to go from there. We haven't, they haven't talked about what's going to happen with development.
All I gave us was a preliminary flat, so we really don't have a lot to go on. Basically, kind of got them 12. So once they provide us work with long and flat, then we can have a discussion.
For what's worth, I did not know that it was a... This is the first one, but I'm also not that...
Mike Pulaski.
Thank you, council, thank you, mayor. The reason I'm here is because I'm very concerned about the development of Steamboat. It was originally plotted to have nine homes.
Can you say again your address for the record, please?
923 Aspen Lane, Mike Pulaski. So the reason I'm concerned is because it was originally plotted for nine homes with a through street, right? Well, three of those homes are Marysville Township and they're not going to sell and I don't blame them. So there's never going to be a through street. I don't think in my lifetime there will be a through street. I've been here 14 years, that land's been undeveloped for a reason, because there's no through street. So now, the proposal that this builder is coming up with is not only nine homes, but 14 homes. 14 homes, now that just exacerbates the problem because there's still no way out of there. So you got all these homes in one spot and only one way out. And Mr. Triplet said in his own words, it's, it's on the website that a dead end or a cul-de-sac is a fireman's worst nightmare. And if there is a fire up there, he doesn't have a choice, he's got to get the rig up there and do the best he can to contain the blaze, contain the other homes. But the way this is set up, it's going to be bad. It really is going to be bad. And Louis, he doesn't care about Mantras. All he cares about is making money and he doesn't give a rip about us. He's going to put in his homes, get out of here, and that's it. And as members of the council, I think when you, when you retire, whenever your term is up and you drive down the street and you look at where the development that went in, you can be proud that you did that. I think that would be awesome. But this development, the way it's put together with that many houses with only one way out is a bad situation. It really is. You know, 12 homes, the way it's presented, that's 24 cars because you figure each person has two cars, all miningers have at least two cars. So that's 24 more cars coming on Steamboat. There's currently right now, there's 18 children that live on there. So they're, you know, that's part of the problem too, what I think is there's just no way out. So you've got all these extra homes that weren't planted for, I mean, why have planning and zoning if, if you're just going to ignore it all? So I know you're all right, I want you to think about this. I don't think Louis has a gun to any of your heads. There's other developments out there that go through down though, they, they don't have high density, you know, that's what I call this is high density homes. It, it can be medium density, which is what's there right now. Thank you for your time.
This would be easy, I'm just here for...
205 Garfield Avenue North.
And I'm just here to ask you to talk to you guys about the Fishland Lower Fields that we brought up last year. The concern was that we were going to be in contact with Johnny Fish and yes, we are still in contact with him. He actually put a video out, I think a little year ago, talking about coming here and...
He actually put a video out, I think a little year ago, talking about coming here in Montrose. I'm very excited to come to Montrose, so I was brought up again at the Park and Rec meeting last week to do that. And in the end of that, I'm asking that you guys take into consideration putting the sunflowers where the ball field is. Due to the fact that right now that field is completely flooded, and to put a ball field over there makes no sense. Because as we all know, water on a ball field, right Wayne, doesn't do any good. That's why we don't have a hockey rink or a Montrose field. So if we took out the community gardens, which again is a flood zone over there, nothing really grows over there, and let people park along Aspen and Rattle Hole, this would be great for the community. There's really gonna be nothing over the regional park, we all know that, especially the golf fields, because that's gonna be at least 10, 15 feet down the road. So I want to know what council's opinion is on putting in sunflower fields. I know a lot of the residents would be excited to have that. So I'm still gonna be pushing this, I'll still be back until you've been able to do this. It'd be great for the community, thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a good idea. We all voted for it last October.
Well, you voted to put it over where the community gardens are.
The other thing too, that I was gonna ask, so I'm glad you brought this up, are you able to put Mr. Fish in contact with either Jessica or Wendy or Wayne?
Yeah, Jessica has his contact information.
I've never been able to contact him, he has not responded to this.
Oh, that's cool. Yep, absolutely, I'll get, I'll get in touch with Jessica. If and when we do get in contact again, I will let you know about all that, yep.
Yeah, I mean, I think looking at wherever possible to put up isn't a bad idea, it's, you know, that'll, of course, put a Park and Rec and come back here, so.
Okay.
But, I mean, it'd be nice if you were in contact with the city as well, just so that everyone's on the same page.
I know, I'm on the same page. So I know he's talked about coming out here, like, because he had asked if we had a location, and I let him know, you know, he didn't ask if they had a location into it, that's what we talked about last October or whatever.
20 acres they're looking for?
What's that?
20 acres, they are in the...
No, I think that maybe two. It's, I mean, it's not a very big area at all, so, so then when I did reach out to him again, when he took the video out, like, week, I think it was one week ago, he said that he would find time to come out here, and at that time we'll get ahold of you and we can actually see if we can get up there as well, so. So you are open for putting it over in the ball field area?
Open to deserve, it's a great place to put them.
I would like to be...
I tackle the sunflower regardless, I'd like the prime place to put them.
Right.
We gotta make sure that it's the right place to put them.
So where the ballpark's gonna be developed, then you basically have to tear all that out there, re-need your entire area?
Correct, but if you look at it right now, it's got to be done anyway, because it's a complete flood zone. I mean, the area, I mean, I can send you pictures, it's all underwater, it's not a good place for a ball field anyway.
The reason it's underwater is because the ground is still frozen.
Exactly, but the drain, the runoff, the runoff from the home that's over there is the same way as Wayne has said multiple times, the water that sits in the ball field is not good for ball fields, it destroys ball fields.
When the spring comes, it's not over there, wait.
The same as it does on Parker Field.
But it's grass over there right now, there's no infield that we're talking about.
We'll talk about it into the consideration.
It doesn't make any sense.
I mean, we're definitely open to hearing what Mr. Fish says.
Okay, alright, thank you.
April Herzog.
April Herzog, 467 Montrose, South Side. What you're all gonna find out is I'm not actually a citizen of Montrose, I'm Marysville Township, but I live in that regional park, I live in the center of it. And I have been trying to get the council and staff to listen to me about this sunflower field, but I'm told that they don't want to listen to me because I'm not a citizen, townspeople. This, the sunflower field could make Montrose look great. It could make it so much better than what it is right now. We need something in here to get our spirits up. We all know, if you're following that park, that the regional park, that this whole field I'm going into another 15 years. At us, the road needs to be done, the land needs to be redone, there's swales, there's things I think have to take a look at it, because right now, it is really one of the biggest illusions in Montrose. I have a plan to cut down on the amount of home, and what that park is costing me right now, you let Johnny Fish run with Fish Sunflowers, but it needs to be between Harhols and Moots also, because up on that corner at Amster, Aspen is a freeway. That road is fast, if anyone parks on it, they're gonna get hit. You should put the parking where the community garden is. That open lot right there, it runs flood every year. There's maybe four or five people that use them, and it always floods, I've been out there and put grass out of there anyway. Just mow it for the summer, every other week instead of every week. And let us harrow on that for the sunflower fields. Every year that they're out there, people will be putting money in their pocket, because public works won't be mowing it for an entire day, it takes them all day to mow that.
I don't mean to cut you off, did you want to talk about the second part of your request on there too?
I have a retaining wall was on the agenda between, and because it's our land, I just wanted to know what's going on with it. At the beginning of you guys putting in that park, you have a retaining wall there to secure our property. When Army and Corps of Engineers came out, you took that retaining wall out. Our land is now falling into the park. This will be your treat that we've been asking for help with. I heard it was on the agenda tonight, so that's why I'm here to talk about it, I just need to know what's going on, is that going in? I have maps from when the park first was shown off to the city that have a retaining wall. But last year when I brought it up, I was told that there was never a retaining wall there by public works and the city engineer.
Can we call you back up when we talk about it, because it is, it's under new business, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, like we said, when Michelle was up here too, like the sunflowers, we're definitely considering it, like, yeah, I mean, who doesn't want to live in sunflowers? Thanks, everyone. Ashlyn Otto.
My name is Ashlyn Otto, I live at 205 Garfield Avenue North, and I just want to talk briefly on the behavior and lack of professionalism I have seen in some city employees recently. I will be quick, short to the point, I feel that the behavior with the city employees at the last Park and Rec meeting was unprofessional, and I do not think that it is right to dismiss April and her concerns and thoughts, simply because she is not a resident of Montrose, because what by definition doesn't make her a resident wouldn't make me a resident either, because I don't pay a property tax, my parents do. I don't pay utilities, my parents. At the end of the day, her is a quote flat 5363 as is mine, and she, in my eyes, is just as much to those aspects of resident design. And to see our public works director completely dismiss any thoughts and comments and concerns that she has, I do not feel is right and should not be considered acceptable. If I did that in my place of work, I definitely would not be seeing large increases in my wages every year, I would just not have a job. And then, just quickly, upon entering today, we were all asked and requested to wear masks. I do not have a problem with that, I understand that that is the recommendation given by the government right now, and I'm glad they comply with that. But it'd be 13 people up here that are representing our city and that are our leaders, only four of you are wearing masks, and you are not all six feet apart. I would just like to say that you can't expect something from your residents if you can't do that yourself. That's all I got.
Thanks, Ashlyn.
Thank you.
Is that all the requests again?
I'd like to speak for good. I just came in, I did not write my name on there, because I just came in. Am I okay to approach?
Yeah, that's fine. You just get your name and address for the...
So my name is Chris Gillings, I live at 610 Dillon Avenue North. In regards to this water situation, I was at home, listening to this, and it's honestly a joke. You guys seem like you could care less about what's going on. So let me tell you something, moved here 2015, perfectly healthy. 2018, I'm diagnosed with ALS. If you go back and look at what magnesiums can do to you, it gives you symptoms of ALS. About four months ago, they took that diagnosis off the table because I haven't been progressive, but I still have every symptom. So, you guys don't think it's a big deal? That this water's being poisoned? Step into my shoes. I live with issues every single day. Muscle cramping, can't sleep, constant muscle tremors, lots of abuse of my right arm. Every single one of those is a symptom to this poisoning of the water. So fix it. And to sit back and say, oh, we've been talking about this for so long, and we really don't give a crap about it, because that's what you guys are acting like, that's a damn joke. One in my shoes, once, just once, one damn day, that I have to live with it.
Amen.
I'm not on the list, Mr. Mayor, I speak.
Yes, sir, Mr. Rupert, thank you. Well, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Joe McDonald, I'm your state representative for the last 10 years, I live in Telenoe, Minnesota. Where my wife and I conduct business, my son Jacob bought a house here in Montrose about a year ago. So the water's a concern, is a great concern of mine, and it's a great concern of the mayor and the council. He and I spoke just today, sometimes notified me the issue. So I'm here just to listen. God, he was what, two ears and one mouth, so I'm just here to listen. But I can say that I am setting up a meeting with the Minnesota Department of Health, based upon your mayor's pass on me, to sit down with the deputy commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Health and talk about magnesiums in the water. If it was, and it is a serious issue, but if it was imminent threat, they would shut down it completely yesterday, so it is not yet. But your council and your staff are doing the best they can right now to monitor the situation and make sure that they correct it and modify it. So I think we've got to give an opportunity at least to work with them. I don't think that they are not taking this seriously. We got Mike Cashmark, your county commissioner, I'm here, I have other things, I dropped everything to come up here because it's very serious. Kirby said if you could make it, please, please come, we could use your help. So, Thursday I will be meeting with the Minnesota Department of Health, and we'll discuss the issue. And I would probably recommend, perhaps we could set up a meeting from the Department of Health to come here and talk to the people of Montrose, and concern, give you, you can assert your concerns, and get some information from those, them as well. They are the ones that are sent off this letter, they're the ones that did the testing, I think it'd be best that we hear from them, wouldn't you agree, Mr. Mayor? You can get their opinion as well. Now, the Minnesota Department of Health, Minnesota Control Pollution Control Agency aren't perfect either. Remember, Jen Malcolm, our commissioner, said that kids couldn't go to school, yet the CDC and the WHO said they should. So we just have to be cautious and have cool pets and calm hearts to deal with the issue. That's all I really have to say on that. But I certainly will take questions and are happy to set up another meeting with the Department of, Minnesota Department of Health and your city council to address the concerns immediately.
Greg.
Joe, Greg, you... When you had the meeting with Department of Health, the reason that it was disapproved for PFA funding, last time we submitted, was that there wasn't a lot of research involved in magnesiums at that time, and it wasn't a consideration to have to be removed, it was a secondary consideration with the water quality. So the Department of Health needed to get to the Water Quality Association to have that become a priority to be removed, and then it would hit on the priority funding piece in order to get PFA funding. That's where the two organizations meet and meet heads, because there's a lot more research that's been done on magnesiums now than was available when our original submission went through back in 2016, that may elevate that to a priority issue as opposed to a discontinued, or a not needed to be removed issue.
And Greg speaks the truth. The Minnesota Department of Health has been changing some of their levels as they continue to do the studies. But remember, I asked Phil Curran, our city minister here, back when I was the mayor in 2005, we built a new wastewater, or a water treatment plant to deal with the magnesiums and iron, but apart from that, we were drinking the water for the last 100 years, same here in Montrose. So I think as the Minnesota Department of Health continue to do their studies and realize that the magnesiums and iron levels should be at a certain level that's safe, obviously there will be change in their direction, but no written letters or the studies did say it was unsafe. But it certainly is to be cautious and continue to do the data, and it's being done right away, nobody's cavalier about this at all. So, any other questions? I have sore control, I'm not sick. I was young at the rest and match on Thursday in front of Beverly, that's where I lost my voice, my apologies. Anything else? I see you have an open forum, so you have a lot of discussions, I like the sunflower one, it's a little easier with that. But I will do, I will be more available to govern your meetings at least once a month, or once every other month, to talk about state issues and everything else. When you do find out the solutions to the magnesiums and iron, we certainly can, if necessary, request some funding, some appropriations for the bonding bill. Wright County's a very, Wright County's a good county, it's one of the best counties, right? We're low magnesium, we don't ask the state for a lot, so I have no problem going back to the state, asking the folks in the progressive state to help us pay for some things in infrastructure in our towns. We did it for Delo for the dyke, we're doing it for South Haven for their water, water tunnel, and we'd be happy to go to Montrose if necessary to ensure good quality water. Question?
Yeah, have you heard of other cities where they have this issue recently, or has it been an issue in the past, or what are other cities doing?
I think according to Minnesota Department of Health, it's often done a study all over in Minnesota, of course, the water quality. I haven't heard of any city that had magnesium, magnesiums or iron high levels. I did talk to, again, our city manager, and it is common from time to time, as the Minnesota Department of Health lowers the thresholds of levels, that then the city should have to respond. But remember the well waters, those who are all the country in well water, there's high levels of magnesium and iron levels as well. And according to the Minnesota Department of Health, some of it is good for your body. In many foods and nutrients, there's magnesiums and iron, but we know that's good. The supplements that we take make it help my voice. We take magnesium or iron supplements, but there are thresholds the Minnesota Department of Health has set, and that's what they're dealing with now.
So there is a need, as far as we know, there's no other town that at this point that's...
I will find that out on Thursday.
I can, I can tell you from the research that I've done, currently, other cities are dealing with it. I believe Norfield, Ramsey, and Waverly is also, also as long as like two years ago, they're dealing with it also.
Are they the same levels, do you know?
I do not know that. I just know that they, they have been dealing with it.
In regards to the masks, the governor did say, and is executing a order 2049, that you could take it off to speak, but otherwise we'll put it back on when I go sit down. So that's why I haven't offered it, because the governor does have to, I mean, that's acceptable. Question?
Yeah, isn't the water already above the National Health Association? That's why we got these letters, because it's not really safe to drink the water.
That's what I'm gonna find out on Thursday, but I have a sneaking suspicion, if it wasn't safe to drink, they'd be here right now and chuck it down the water.
Then we should be telling these people to get their heads out.
They do, they're working hard, that's, they're not giving us anything. Any other questions, though?
One of the biggest trouble there in Montrose is all the city staff there, they don't live in Montrose, they don't give a crap about it.
We do, though. I know some, I've been reading the water right here, right? The council here is listening, but if you're welcome to call me or stop in my studio, I'm zooming to the cattle, not the vehicle, the computer. So I'm certainly accessible to answer phone calls or in-beam person if you want. Question?
Oh yeah, my, my dad lived here for 30-plus years and just passed away in October, but has the water been like this as long as he's lived here? Because he had the tremors, he, he couldn't remember when he would say something, talk, he'd lose his memory and like repeat himself a lot, and then, you know, like, he had a lot of kidney failure and stuff, and he passed in October.
Well, first of all, water's a symptom, it's a capacity problem.
Yeah, and like, this popped up, and they could never really figure out where it stemmed from.
Yeah, I cannot answer that question unfortunately. Although I have drank the water, it's within you, because I grew up in the water tunnel, and the McDonald's land is from the way we do Montrose water supply area, but I can't answer that directly. that directly. Question?
Yes, Joe, are you aware that the school district did send out a letter to the, uh, who has lawyer in Montrose? The local handler of Montrose, school district did send a email out to everybody.
And what did it say?
That they've been in contact with MDH also about this. Do you have a copy? Where's, where's the lawyer?
Well, I'll read this anyway, there's some time here when I can put my chair on.
You gotta copy what you want.
I do have it, yeah. All right, anything else? I'm gonna dash to visit my son, he must be helping out with some trim, he's still fixing his house, so. But seriously, you can get ahold of me anytime, uh, heard the mayor and the council, but it's at your disposal, that's why we're here, to help out whenever we can.
Are you gonna read that?
Oh, well, I do have a good voice, I'd have someone else that has a stronger voice. Look, Floyd, why did you do this? No, it's up to the mayor, they have to decide what to do.
I'll see, listen to me. This, uh, this was sent out by the Montrose Elementary, I don't know if it was the...
With Mr. Scottus.
The person. Uh, they sent this out, and they said they, they were made aware, uh, today, March 8, that the last few city Montrose notified residents, the results of the test that was conducted to monitor the city's water quality. While the city's drinking water supply complies with the Safe Drinking Water Act standards, they did find elevated levels of magnesiums in the water greater than what Minnesota Department of Health, MDH recommends. Many of you have been contacting us, the school district, wondering how we plan to handle this news. Our BHM Director of Buildings and Grounds has taken actions on this news and immediately began looking into the situation. Here is what we know. The district contacted MDH and was told that the school's water continues to be acceptable to use without modification. The district has already contacted the health and safety consultants and has scheduled an independent analysis of the water coming into MESI and the Montrose Elementary, the Montrose Early Education Center, MEEC. The school has a water softener system in place that may reduce the level of magnesiums according to MDH. The school also uses water bottle filling stations that use a filtration system. Magnesium is needed by humans and is safe to consume at certain levels. MDH recommends that filtered water is used for infants and toddlers, who are considered more vulnerable, and the MEEC. It is not necessary to close the building. Once we know more, we will follow up with more information for you. In the meantime, you can know that we are researching the issue and will continue to ensure the safety of your children when they are in our care. You have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out. Thank you, and then the principal and superintendent for listening.
Well, just to follow up on that then, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll give you a call then on Friday after I have that meeting with the commissioner, and if you guys want to set up another time, we'll be happy to come out, week or two, whatever it is that's serving.
Yeah, that sounds great, thanks, Joe. Thanks for coming. Make sure.
I'd like to say that there are a couple of things. Um, most of us here, obviously, kind of just got thrown into this, this deal, um, you know, this is month number three if you're in the state council. Um, it does concern us. I live here, my daughter lives here, my wife lives here, all my neighbors, all my friends. This does concern us. Don't take anything that we are up here saying or not saying as not a concern. We, we want to get this right, okay? So what we're, what we're asking for is a little, it's a little trust from you guys that we can get this done. Uh, Mr. Scottus, I see, I mean, I, I feel, I feel your opinion.
2015, right since you guys know about it, and you're, you're asking for trust, that doesn't, that doesn't, that doesn't work.
I wasn't here in 2015.
I understand, I understand, I'm not saying you personally, I'm just saying the city as a whole, 2015, they've known about it. Okay? I moved here 2016, shortly thereafter, my symptoms started.
Right, and I understand, and again, I can't speak for what happened before we got here, but, but know that going forward, we're gonna do everything we can to try to mitigate this issue.
Is it, is there gonna be transparency? I mean, are...
I, I, I think that kind of all started when we first got the news, and, you know, the first council meeting we were at was, okay, let's get a plan together, let's send this out so you guys are aware. I mean, the plans aren't even started, so we, we're into this already, so, and...
And you're gonna keep us from getting on your action plan, and what, that you're gonna have to...
Correct. And therefore, there are other things that I'd like to see implemented too. Um, I know we're testing these wells bi-monthly, or twice a month. I'd like to see that information put up on the city website. Um, maybe we can get out like a map of the wells and kind of have that information out there through you. Um, I had somebody else. Oh, Mr. McDonald's, bringing in MDH, and, you know, having them sit down with everyone up here. I think, you know, the more transparent we're, we're gonna be, the better off we're all. Okay, so, I mean, we're not hiding anything. We got this information out as fast as we possibly could. It may have taken an extra month, but there was a lot of things, perching and all of that stuff, it's just, we can't fire it up over here. But we are trying to make this right, like I said.
There, and yes, there will be transparency on this. It's within a few days of the council meeting when Jared let us know about this, and we had these numbers in front of us. I emailed him and several staff and Tom, asking that they put together a letter and send it out to all the residents. Not even offers that I would sign at the bottom of it, just so that everybody had complete transparency that we're going to work on this, and yes, it sucks, but we're going to stop it right now. The bug's gonna stop here, we're not gonna put it out any longer, not kicking the can down the road, it's gonna stop right now, and we're going to do whatever we can to fix it.
Worst case scenario, what are the options? I mean, because I like to think worst case scenario.
Jared just spent thousands of dollars to get a filtration system.
In your home, but that, I mean...
I would say the, the, the worst that we could do would be, that they just have to do filtrations in home, would be a recommendation from MDH, otherwise, it's a water treatment facility that costs north of seven million dollars now. Would those kind of be the two ends of the spectrum?
Yeah, so one of the options will, will likely be water treatment, because that's matching one of previous rather than others up to. Really, the only way to get it, remove it from the water is to filter it.
Research out there, there's several filters that do work. One of them is an in-home filter system, and you need to make sure that it covers magnesiums. One of them is in our own unit, reverse osmosis unit, and there are some over-the-counter pitchers, that do filter ninety-nine percent of all particulates. Um, and the biggest issue, we've had, it's not a quick fix, we've been at it for a long time, and it's not a quick fix, unfortunately. It's not something that is required to be removed from municipal water, and that's a problem with Department of Human, Health and Human Services not addressing that, that the Water Quality Administration is making a priority issue so that we can get funding to pay for it.
But like, I can afford it, I would love the other families in Montrose that can't afford the filter system. You know, that's...
Is this a year of entry work, is that what it's called?
It's just magnesiums.
The filter, the filter does not remove it, there are some commercially available, Walmart has one in Montrose.
Walmart, yeah, and filter.
Zero, 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 zero water.
Zero water.
Ninety-nine point nine percent magnesium removal.
If you look at zero water, the filter, for what our level by here in Montrose, it says that a filter needs to be replaced every eight gallons. So, if you do the math on how much filters you're gonna go through to actually take it out?
Yeah, I'm not sure, what I saw was twenty gallons, so I'm not sure.
I mean, that's why we're, we're, we get this serious issue, which is why I contacted Joe, and like he said, we're on the phone several times today trying to get him here, so.
Thank you.
He dropped meetings to come here so that he could make sure that he took care of this and helps us out, so.
Now, if, like, we'll say, hey, Mayor, we have a new water treatment plant, is, do you think there'll be funding that the health pay for that instead of raising taxes?
That's something that we're going to look into, if there's possible funding out there from the state to deal with this, so.
Mr. Mayor, the twelfth of April, our next meeting, the Department of Health can be here.
What, April?
Might be twelfth.
It's a whole month away.
As soon as they get here.
Has anybody, uh, found out what it's gonna cost to put a filtration deal in these wells?
That's what we're trying to...
That's what we're working on.
You know, you're expecting to be in the house, you can have that there tomorrow, next day. This is gonna cost...
Takes a lot of labor, big building.
Instead of sitting here saying, "Oh yeah, we're gonna work on it," now April twelfth, you're gonna come back.
State's coming, that's when the state's coming out. If, this has been an issue for several years. You were not in the council in 2016 when this was brought up before I've been here. Okay, I'm sorry to call you all like that, but this should have been handled several years ago, so we're gonna sit here and handle it now.
That's right, and it was very old then, but it was almost like...
Lloyd, it's been the exact, it's almost the exact same numbers.
Lloyd, Lloyd, the wells come from the same oil, it has not changed.
I hate to cut the discussion short, but we do have to move on. Uh, ready to share us? Sure you guys have to get out on patrol too, so.
City Council, Mayor, people of Montrose, my name is George Hall, I'm a deputy director of the department's office. If you don't know me, I've been here for about a year and a half now, working in the Montrose lately, here, here, I'm here. I won't be down here in 2021 as well. Uh, no training, I have a kind of note, some stats from the last thirty days. We had about a hundred fifty-eight traffic stops in the area, three motor vehicle accidents, eleven domestic disturbances. Um, you guys all have had about eighteen suspicious circumstances. I just wanna encourage you guys to keep calling me if you guys see things. You guys know your neighborhood's fast, so give us a call if you think you're about activity to foot, it's the best way for us to find out something's going on. In total, the Wright County Sheriff's Office responded to about three hundred calls for service, a hundred and thirty-three of those sharing the cases, that concluded in twenty-eight citations and six arrests. Any questions here?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for all you do.
Yeah, I got one. You guys make any progress on the, the people robbing cars and going into garages last year? It's, it's almost that season, and I don't think anybody was ever apprehended on that, it was a chronic thing, it was just kept happening all over the city.
I think Kevin's got, and Kevin's coming on here. Do you know the answer, Gordon?
I do not.
So that was a very large statewide, uh, spree that was happening.
Yep.
Multiple, multiple arrests have been made in that.
Yep.
Um, but it's gonna continue to happen. Um, continue to lock your car doors, shut your garage doors, and like Deputy Ellis said, call in any suspicious activity, because it gets us into the right areas at the right time. Don't delay in calling us, if something's happening now, call us now. Don't wait until the morning or something like that. You won't bother us, we're here twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. Um, but it, it's a trend that happens every year. Some places get hit every year, some places get skipped over from year to year, but the best thing we can say is just lock your doors, keep valuables out of your cars, um, invest in some, uh, Ring cameras, Nest's cameras, things like that, those help tremendously. Um, and then just protect your property the best that they can.
I catch a little sucker in my garage, can I hold him down until you get there?
Don't answer that. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, city council, Monday, I tell you your board. Start saying.
Uh, it's the city council, special city council, I mean, zoning. Here, city council. Uh, council meeting, uh, me, most smart medic of the community, uh, Wright County Board of Fishers, personnel meeting, uh, book post in the commerce, special council meeting, engineering meeting, deputy clerk in the news, and staff.
Uh, the council meeting, special council meeting, fire department, congratulations to those who got their boards, and Kevin, and thank you for all you do, it's been a crazy year, you've done amazing, so.
Agreed.
Uh, personnel meeting, uh, and a meeting with the rep from time to date.
Uh, special council meeting, council meeting, do you have some? Uh, Park and Rec, also Park and Rec, and Ramble.
Council meeting, uh, special council meeting. Okay, uh, Park and Rec.
All right, guys, I'll back. All right, I'm gonna start off with some great news. Our friend Katie, we should all have her this one, so we can get her all to office in. Um, and then we discussed the, thanks for Easter egg hunt, we were just...
Ashley and Phil, you're asking Tom, can I hear you?
Yep, sorry, Adam and Kevin. We discussed lots on Easter egg hunts, uh, we came up with a conclusion, the best and safest option would be to view this as a drive-through event, she's kind of like, uh, Easter egg hunt, maybe, whatnot. Uh, so with that, I would like to ask you guys to approve a, is anyone in our free buildings, uh, handles out? Uh, I think Jessica has the exact number.
Yeah, were you, were you moving it this Saturday right before Easter, or the meat and fry?
Yes, April third, I believe.
Yeah, 'cause I know it's the first weekend in April this year.
Yeah, so April third would be egg hunt and Easter's on the board.
You said it's up to six hundred?
Up to six hundred.
I'll make a motion to approve the up to six hundred dollars for pre-filled eggs for Easter egg, uh, drive-through.
All second.
Further discussion? David?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Although, yes, Tom?
No, no.
Sam?
Aye.
Motion passes four one. Um, who, who do you have to volunteer for that?
Well, in past years, it's always just under department meeting.
I don't, do you have any people to help out with it?
Uh, there's four of us, in the past there's only been three, so.
If you need additional help, I mean, I should be available if we can.
We would probably just love to be guys with your presence, because we can always use volunteers. Um, otherwise, this should go a little bit smoother than past year, certainly, you know, we have to fill five thousand eggs and hide them, and we do pictures and everything, this should be pretty quick and easy in comparison. But if you have little ones, definitely bring them up, uh, have them get snacks.
Of course, I can be...
Uh, so we're thinking that we're possibly gonna have it work, so they're gonna come up, I think you're talking...
Center.
Center, thank you, center.
Up center, counter.
Drive center, drive through the community center, park and lot to get there, someone and exit out, that way.
Is there a plan for someone like directing, or someone else to do that and such?
Um, I'm hoping that, well, one of us will be in a little classroom, and, well, assuming all in attendance, then two people or one or two people would be directing traffic, and if you look at the whole staff, we could, uh, have you, you know, running eggs up to our buddy.
The other thing too, uh, do you think it would all be possible that maybe, uh, Deputy would do a drive-by and say hello to kids when that's going on?
You know what?
If we reach out to the sheriff's department?
If they're up for it, yeah, I'd be happy to have it. Um, I think a lot of kids will always seem to be, so, I feel like it's a little happy with, everything's after cool.
What time is it?
Um...
Ten AM.
Ten AM?
We'll make sure that day cards go up, and they'll drive around and stuff, and they'll be in there, and so. Thanks, Kevin.
Uh, next up on that list, uh, we got two 2021 appointments, um, you guys have any questions about 2021 appointments?
I'll make a motion to approve the appointments as voted on by the partner or commission. I will study. Uh, can you just list those, wait for the record?
Um, if you want it in depth, or just...
Just who's what position?
Uh, myself, Apple Natos, uh, was voted for chair, uh, Sue Salmon for co-chair, or second vice chair, my qualities, and Katie Ward for, uh, secretary. Secretary, thank you, struggle a little over to...
Further discussion on the motion? Sam?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Although, yes, motion passes five zero.
For this big park update, uh, it sounds like we're getting a park open pretty soon here, just waiting for the weather permitting, uh, need to do some grading, and then just kind of plot that part in. But I believe we said...
Who, I'm sorry, I made a... Wait, who's doing the grading, or horse grading?[1773.32]
Uh, Jake's desk today.
Okay. That's what I thought at this point, which I don't know. Thank you.
And your ballpark for that? Ooh, or what was your ballpark?
As soon as they, as soon as the ground dries, it'll be convenient.
Pretty cheap.
That's good timing. And original park update, uh, as previously stated, we were working with Fish on our fields. Um, it sounds like, um, John Fish had some personal things going on, so he was, uh, occupied with that. So it does sound like he's been reaching out a little bit more and a little bit more active now that he had a little bit more free time. Um, I am not the best person to talk about, uh, your locations and plans on that park and what the land looks like. Um, just as I haven't had really the opportunity to go out and in-depth walk the park and really understand what that land looks like. So I would like to discuss that. Um, we all together really need to listen to Ms. Ratan, uh, Ratan. Um, she's gonna know that land better than anybody here, and I understand that we have a plan and that we want to stick to that plan. But as time changes, we can learn more about the parks and what these, what the lands can look like and how floods and how land acts in, in nature. And that was part of my frustration with her being dismissed, uh, with her concerns, because you know your back, your backyard better than anybody else. And that's the same with April. She's gonna know, this is her backyard. She's gonna know that better than I do, than you do, than anybody does. And I would just like to be able to work alongside April and see what, how we can make this park the best possible park it can be. Because if we're gonna dump all this money and all this time and all these resources into a park, we need to do it right. Otherwise, we're gonna end up with a ton of rundown parks, and we have a handful of already mediocre, bad parts. And we want to have the, the way that I'm interpreting our plan to original park is this is supposed to be something that's a little bit more unique to our community and something that's supposed to make us really stand out. And we can do, we can do that. We have the time, we have, we can get that, all those resources. We just need to do that. And I would like to work alongside April with that and not see her dismissed because she is not a resident of the city. Um, on another note related to original park, I have recently reached out to, um, an active member with the Boy Scouts to see if we can discuss using their boys, uh, or Eagle Scout projects to do some of the smaller projects. Um, I do need to further discuss that weekend as we need to see what could possibly be a good fit for these projects. Um, kind of things that I had in mind would be like, um, the tennis courts or the basketball courts, some of those smaller projects. Uh, I will also be reaching out to the Girl Scouts in the near future. I actually, like, just did a voice within an hour and a half. Uh, but I will also be reaching out to Girl Scouts as well to see what other resources that we can come up with to see how we could start getting a jump on this part, because people are, they're, they're antsy. I understand that this is supposed to be a twenty to twenty-five year project, but it's been filed already in. We have some gardens that flood every year, and that's about it. That's about it. Like, uh, you guys have any questions for me?
Have, have we started looking into updating the tracks and trail?
I will make sure that it is on the agenda for April. Can you make sure that's, uh, on the agenda over April, please? Um...
And again, I, I applaud your drive for the regional park. I really do. Okay, it's, it's obviously a huge passion of yours, and I understand that. Um, but again, as we circle back to some of the smaller parts, you know, like forest break, we're getting to that point. We're finally getting our, getting that playground in there. Um, again, I'd like to see some kind of update to that across the trail. There's always smaller parts that are surrounded by, you know, the community inside too, so. Anyone a little over that?
I will make a physical note of that, because that's all I should remember. Um, I do have a lot to learn, and I'm obviously pretty passionate about all the parks and all the time on the Department of Labor. Uh, I'm passionate about outside, keeping these active. I do agree with you, though, we do need to update, like, some of our, uh, already existing facilities, but if you are paying attention and talking to people, not, not implying that you're not, um, but...
Well, first of all...
Yeah, yeah. People are very anxious to see this now. I feel a lot of people aren't personally motivated, and they don't necessarily understand or realize or necessarily care that this is a long-term project. But I think if we just start kind of getting in some of those smaller projects first, it will start to seem a lot more happiness and, and, and with this project.
There's many things in the water. And the state's got to work with it, and it's always been a better move. Man, it hurts your short hands, imagine.
So, as I was...
There's many things in the water.
As, as we were saying, um, yes, I mean, I do applaud your, your drive, your guselle for the regional park. We do, we do need to take a look at some of the other smaller parks too.
Oh, of course, and, you know, we're obviously, we need to, especially... I really can't use my words today. I'm sorry. Mine's hard. That one, I don't understand that priority right now, because it's a little, um, older and rundown, so. So, yeah, let's get those things in, but I would also just like to throw some props up to, um, our forest residents, because they played a very large role in making that part of our membership. Um, so like, I don't wish to make anybody else, but they're gonna be a part of the forest, because the residents of Forest Creek made that happen.
Yes, totally agree with you.
I just want to make sure that they get the, um, they get the credit where it's due. They made that happen, and I applaud them for it.
Big thanks to Fanny and Marish.
They worked very hard, and I appreciate them for it. Um, you guys have any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Planting zoning.
I'm Justin Holland, planning zoning. Due to, uh, vacancy, I was, uh, voted to be, uh, the chair as the last meeting. Um, the end of that, we had two public hearings, a conditional use permit for one-eleven bump of value, which we, uh, approved and advised City Council to do the same. The other public hearing was a PUD for the Loomis project on Steamboat. We unanimously rejected it and advised the council against approving it. Uh, the other thing we had was, uh, Mr. Roger Froman had an application to join our commission, and we unanimously approved that. The meeting for March cancel, was canceled due to, uh, lack of agenda.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve Roger Froman for the planning zoning commission motion.
All seconded.
We already did this, it sounds like. Um, do we need to make a motion to approve the chair election?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, make a motion to approve the election of Chas Malo to position a chair for planning zoning.
Dale's gonna mount for a little time.
Further discussion? Tom?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
All vote yes. Motion passes by zero.
Thank you.
Um... Updates from city planning?
Uh, yes, uh, you guys want to update on the development of the town. Uh, to begin with, the old case, we did talk to National State Day. Um, still part of the case, he's a brim, so he's still, uh, he's putting that off until he wants to be on to that. I asked if he needed any help with that, and he's not gonna help this time, but he's still looking forward to doing the project. He doesn't have any idea what that. Um, regarding the home match, uh, I did talk to Jonathan today as well. Um, he's having an issue with his equipment manufacturer, um, so he's had to deal with that. And it's kind of a lag in what he does, but I said that if he figures that out, I can work with that. There is no expected timeline on that. Um, regarding the reserve, uh, developer is still kind of working on his design and what I was presenting you guys as the state. And it still doesn't need to be done in a utility test. They have not been able to do that, but they're doing that. Sometimes holding me, but then I should back them if they don't have it. Um, we did also get a property inquiry, uh, property that is north of Rose Haven property. It's a vacant one-acre lot. Uh, the owner wanted to propose a eight and five plex, those would be counterhomes. Um, I just kind of filled in then with the information all would be required for that property. Um, that was, uh, Blue Door Builders, and they would be the contractor. Uh, the owner of that was looking to move for a, now it's in Europe. But I'm still kind of tentative on that. And then the last would be the rolling meadows that have been passed into a revised plan. And based upon that, I would be having to do, uh, staff report for you guys. And that would come before reporting you into the next city council meeting.
Any questions for Dana? Do we need a motion for the tabling of the rolling meadows, or is it just their minimum?
No, that's kind of...
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the tabling of the rolling meadows development discussion.
Just a second.
Just a second. Further discussion? David?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
All vote yes. Tom?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Motion passes by zero. Uh, Personnel and Employee Relations Committee.
Uh, first thing is the city administrator contract, the personnel committee, um, the personnel, we quite felt that saying that on the very eighteen to discuss the trade-related contract, so that kind of gives a little boost that which is made full council approval.
You have questions from councilmen?
No.
I will make a motion to approve the city administrator contract.
All seconded.
Further discussion?
Can you just explain the contract to the public since it wasn't at the desk?
Um, it's basically the contract, instead of the city administrator being in the union, they will be under an independent contract with the city. Um, it was negotiated between the city's lawyer and attorney and, uh, a attorney for Jessica for the contract. Um, covers a lot of the same stuff as the union employment agreement. Um... But, um, is there more detail to that for that?
So, how much are you, how much are you talking about?
Uh, what was the, Tom, I don't remember yet.
It's starting at eighty-two five.
Eighty-two five and then a pending review.
For almost eighty-five.
That's at ninety days, correct?
Correct.
Tom, successful review after ninety days. If not, then it stays the same.
So did I hear you correctly, eighty-two five?
That's correct.
And what was she presently making?
She wasn't presently the city administrator. I would go help you see if there's any difference.
Yeah, I know, but we didn't have money here a little while on the water issue, but now we got all kinds of money.
This won't be any different from a hurricane.
Oh, I know it's different. It's all of our taxpayers' money.
This is already a budget.
Budgets that you bought in Brooklyn. Further discussion? Sam?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
All vote yes. Motion passes by zero to approve the city administrator contract. Uh, city clerk treasurer, salary effective April first, twenty twenty-one. Jessica? Or the hearing either one?
At the January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, special city council meeting, the city council approved a change from deputy clerk to city clerk treasurer for Miss Manson effective April first, twenty twenty-one. Uh, the personnel committee, committee met on Friday, the very eighteen, um, and the discussions took place regarding the wages of city clerk treasurer positions. Um, proposed wage will be, uh, thirty-nine point three dollar. However, um...
Did you want to talk about the change in schedule?
I'm trying to get it up there, but my computer's freezing somehow, I gotta get it in here.
Uh, Miss Manson is requesting a change in schedule to thirty-six hours per week, uh, and forty hours per week. The salary would be based on thirty-six hours for seventy-three thousand four hundred and fifty-six cents per year. Perpertory time would be based on hours worked over thirty-six hours per week, and no change to be placed in transit.
So even with the increase in wage, there will still be a decrease in overall statistics, right?
Correct.
What is the plan for the thirty-six hours?
Pardon?
What is the plan for the thirty-six hours?
What is the plan?
Yeah.
Sorry, April first.
I mean, uh, you know, we have a new deputy clerk coming on board, and, uh, you were looking for Fridays off, right? I don't know if we can do that, why? Um, you know, if you want to drop the thirty-six hours, you know, we could let you do a shorter Monday through Thursday, but having Fridays off is gonna put a burden on a new person and on the rest of the city's, city staff on Fridays.
We can postpone it till later on if you want to. I just, I just did April first because that's in everything else. Is that gonna be effective? But if you want to postpone it, you can.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that'd be a, that'd be a special, a new person. Uh, what, Mr. Attorney, I can't remember his name without my head at the moment. What's that? Sam. There's two of you, so.
That's okay.
What constitutes full-time in the state of Minnesota for hours work?
Um, so I believe that has to do with the type of position. Um, it could also have to do with the labor contract. I, I don't know off the top of my head, but it's something I would be able to look into.
Our personnel policy says thirty hours.
So hold on until April first, you know, just be TBD, I guess?
I'd be happy to follow up on that.
I was just curious, so I think, yeah, personnel policy makes sense, so.
So, just so you know, um, I spoke with Mary Teigen, or her and I, perhaps, we nailed that before. And Mary, and plus our new, um, steward, union rep, whatever you want to call her. And they both, um, just mentioned that issue. First, probably put it in the contract agreements memo that we would be addressing it with our contract negotiations this year. So as long as you're agreeable with the thirty-six hours, that's on point to when we decide to do it, then we would just negotiate it into the contract, and that's, uh, when, when our contracts, because we have to negotiate our contracts this year. So rather than try to go through everything over again and then do it again, we would contract. Um, as long as you guys are in agree, in agreeance, and because our personnel policy states thirty hours is considered full-time. Or a regular employee, I think it's called.
Yeah, I think we want to do that with Heidi.
Kirby? Can I ask a question? Mine? So, Miss Manson is right. In the personnel policy, it says thirty hours, but in the whole year that Heidi Dolan was here, it was a big fight because Miss Manson didn't want to acknowledge that Heidi was a full-time employee, even though our personnel policy does state thirty hours. But now that it's a convenience for this city staff, how is that even being allowed? Because Miss Dolan didn't even, wasn't even allowed to get insurance. It was a fight and a battle to get insurance. But now that it's a different situation to make it easier for this employee, I just, I don't understand. We had a fight a year. We lost a good employee because of the battle that she had to go through. So now it's a different, you guys have to do this.
There was no battle over her thirty hours of, the, when she, she was offered forty hours, she turned down the insurance. She went to thirty-two hours and she wanted insurance, our, our, um... She didn't want health insurance, which our, our personnel policy states anybody working more than thirty hours wouldn't have insurance. She didn't want the regular insurance. She wanted disability insurance. And the disability insurance, which is an employee policy that we pay for, was set up at forty hours. So that needed to be changed. That's what she changed to thirty hours. Nothing else changed. It's always been the same. So, um, it has nothing to do with the insurance. I was asking to go down to thirty-six hours at some point.
Can I just chime in that that question was directed for Kirby, and I would like to hear what Kirby has to say on that.
Wendy has all the details of personnel policy. I don't have the city right front of me, so, I mean, Wendy's been around... I don't have the city right front of me, so, I mean, Wendy's been around for the longest and knows what personnel policy is.
I think our discussion is with...
Has there been any complaints about Wendy in the last couple of days, Jessica?
That's irrelevant.
Why is that relevant? You guys are going to make...
The question on the table has to do with Ms. Manson and not no one who preceded her.
Can you answer that, Jessica?
No, you can't. You can't talk about personnel issues in an open meeting.
All right, let me just ask this, um, when you go to work and there's complaints against you, do you get raises and cater to? Because I don't, just, just throwing that out there.
Pardon me for interrupting, but be sure you're all good boys and girls because Wendy's watching.
Okay.
Well, I would also like to point out that I did want to address earlier, uh, behavior of city staff and just to respect the freedom of the time of it, didn't go into depth, but, um, the only city staff member that I think I've had an issue with is Jessica. So, I'm actually very happy and proud of Jessica for getting the promotion that she will do phenomenally, but she is the only city staff member that treats people with respect. And I just want to make sure that everybody here hears and understands that. And thank you, Jessica, for treating people with respect and dignity, because that is apparently very difficult for others at times.
That was a good time to have a recapping meeting with Ashlyn.
I was at that.
So many personal issues together.
I was at that part in recapping meetings. I knew where Ashlyn was coming from, but you too, Ashlyn, we almost had to stop that meeting thirty seconds into it because you were getting into a verbal fight with another commission member. So when we wanted to, but we can't come up here and keep preaching about how city staff is not respecting everybody.
I, I haven't discussed that, here's the difference. I'm twenty-one, Wendy is not. I will admit that I am impulsive. I would also like to point out that the entire RT of that conversation was me suggesting to another commission member that we should waste these sixty seconds for our fourth commission member to walk in the door, which upset that person. And that person started acting unprofessional, and I will admit that I did not handle that in the most mature way possible. But that wasn't a day because of me moment, and I'm not going to say that it was because of the other commission member, but I will definitely say that I will not be a pressure in that situation. I simply stated, hey, let's wait. That person aggressively came back with, why should we? I came up with my reason, they didn't like my reason. I suggested that it was a personal issue for them. And that was the end of that. And I will admit that I can work on that, but I hate to be the person that does this, but the maturity level between me versus Wendy should not be comparable.
Going forward, I would leave a motion to, uh, go ahead and approve the city clerk treasurer's salary effective April 1st, 2021. Now, Nicole, should you have brought up that part of the personnel issue? Isn't that personnel issue?
Earlier discussion on motion.
Nicole?
What?
Isn't that part of the recapping you brought up that wouldn't have been a personnel issue? Why did you bring that up?
I was about commission members.
They're considered personnel as far as I know.
Yes, they are, they are considered personnel if they're representatives of the city.
Sam?
Aye.
Aye. Will you ask, Nicole?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Motion passes by zero. Hiring of Deputy Clerk. Jessica?
Uh, we need to hire a deputy clerk to replace me, um, in the city. Deputy clerk position was posted in the public on February 9th, uh, with a deadline for applications issued on February 19th. We received twenty-five applications and we reviewed and scored all those by November 23rd. Um, myself and my shelter, we held all the scores into a spreadsheet and the cutoff for interviews was at an average of fifty points, um, for the applications. And as a result, we interviewed eight people, um, and the interviews lead to those on March 3rd. And we do have a candidate, um, Christie Gerard, that we would like to nominate for the deputy clerk's position. What was his name?
Christie Gerard.
Gerard.
I'll make a motion to bring Christie Gerard on as deputy clerk. I will second. Further discussion on hiring Christie Gerard? David?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
All vote yes, Nicole?
Aye.
Motion passes by zero. Public Works?
We had a council meeting talk last fall about very important person who watched the campus site. I wonder if you guys found anything about it? Uh, do you know what the hours would be? Just, uh, I think about twelve hours a week, like from four to eight, two days a week, and from ten to two on Saturdays.
Every Saturday?
Yes.
Kirby, can I say something about the Saturday hours? If, if people work to get their yard cleaned on Saturday, usually you don't have it done by mid-ten in the mornings, maybe Sunday hours instead or later in the afternoon. Just otherwise, you're going to have people working Mondays done and saving it all for the next week to get in for campus site.
Can you say, wait, did you say ten to two on Saturday?
What's that?
Did you say ten to two on Saturday?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure I heard that. Let's take that one till two on Saturday.
We can change the time every time, but I think that's where we kind of start.
No, no, no.
Well, then there's people that want to get there in the morning.
So, okay, we, we can talk about the days and times at a later time, but I'll, I'll make a motion to hire, uh, a seasoned employee to watch the campus site for approximately three months.
I will second.
Further discussion? David?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
All vote yes, Tom?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Motion passes by zero.
Uh, also want to talk about some summer help. We should get two young people to mall moms. We didn't get lunch here because of COVID, that was the problem. A lot of things don't get done if we could other persons doing all along.
Do you know how many years we've been doing, uh, extra summer help? Like ten?
Oh, well, we've been here for fifteen, sixteen, and we're here to last our...
As long as I've been here, they would be able to last.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, summer help for the Public Works Department.
And we advertised last year for thirteen dollars an hour. And I'd do the same for the campus person. If that's right.
Yes, uh, so I'll amend my motion to a seasoned employee to help Public Works at the moment, starting at thirteen dollars an hour.
I will second.
Further discussion? Sam?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
All vote yes, Nicole?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Motion passes by zero.
David, we got any questions for you at the end?
Uh, there's no old business, uh, new business. Year 2021 Downtown Improvement Project Resolution for Public Facilities Authority BFA by Hanson.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, one of the items in your packet this evening is, as you mentioned, a resolution for PFA funding, and this is associated with the Downtown Improvement Project. Public Facilities Authority financing is one of the finance vehicles that the city is contemplating for that Downtown Improvement Project. And one of those requirements associated with that loan application is a resolution that you have before you this evening. We recommend that should the city desire to continue to pursue PFA funding, that you adopt this resolution this evening, uh, so that any of the city's applications...
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve Resolution 2021-13.
I will second.
Further discussion on motion? Sam?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
All vote yes, Nicole?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Motion passes by zero. Uh, this one also goes to you here too, as well, the retaining wall?
Yes. Uh, the second item for public consideration this evening is an item that was discussed, um, a few months ago, but essentially it's the construction of a retaining wall, uh, at the regional park facility, approximately ninety feet in length. Uh, retaining wall would be approximately fourteen feet high. Ultimately, is to provide, uh, better maintenance of their lawn and gravel, really. Picture included in the packets along with the, along with the memo. Two quotes were received for the improvements, they range from, uh, thirteen thousand nine seventy to fourteen thousand five hundred, with the invoke court being situated by Stone the Land's living. And sure, council, if they're continuing with the procedure of that retaining wall graphic, uh, we would recommend that the quote be accepted as the invoke court in the amount of, um, thirteen thousand nine seventy in order to stone the edge.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the retaining wall, uh, out at the regional park for thirteen thousand nine seventy. Yeah, further discussion?
Can I just ask some questions about it?
Yeah.
Okay. Where is the retaining wall going? Is it going up against the fence?
Here's the map that you want.
I would love to see that, thank you.
It's what you and I and Justin were talking about last fall. In that general area.
Is the retaining wall going up against the fence? Because right now, my yard is falling out from under that fence, and if you put a retaining law, where Wayne and Justin were talking, that's so far away from the fence, my yard is still going to fly under that fence.
April is going to go where the landscape person, well, you know, says it should be, that's where it's going to go. Justin and I are picking spot.
Okay, so, uh, it, where they put it, it doesn't, because when he is explaining it, he's saying it's for the road. Um, it was originally put in there to hold my property in place because you removed your property right at the property line. So is the retaining law going right at that property line, so my yard? When I'm holding my fence, I'm sitting sideways right now. I'm going to go through that fence if it keeps going the way it is. And I have asked everyone at council to come out and see it years ago. David, please come out and see it before you haven't been out there. Nobody's been out there from this council.
I, I used to walk out there a lot in the summer and springtime, so I should just, I'm asking that.
You've seen the gap in between that we've been filling in?
Yeah, no, I, I see what you're talking about.
Yeah, so you understand that, that, that retaining law needs to go right up to that fence? Is that where it's going?
Is that where the plan is, Jared, to butt it up right against it?
Yeah, Mayor, Council, the, the fence, um, is proposed for the, sorry, the retaining wall is proposed adjacent to the fence. The quote that, uh, you have motioned in the second on includes inch and a half rock and some poly, which would be in the spare, which would be in between the fence and the retaining wall due to maintenance, which is typically if you have a foot or two of, um, grass in that area, very difficult to maintain, um, and ultimately that's why that would be put in the quote. So, short answer to this question is yes, the retaining wall would go, you know, adjacent to the fence.
And this will solve the problem?
Yes.
Okay.
Does that sufficient?
Yeah, I just need to know where it's going, because when Wayne and Justin were pointing out last year, it wasn't right up next to the fence, and we would have the same problem. We've been asking for help for three years, but I'm often told, because I'm not city, I don't, you know.
Well, we're...
You guys brought us by the neck and brought us into the city, going around us. I'm just asking you what you guys promised from the start, and thank you for finally getting us in there.
Yeah, I'm, hopefully this will solve your problem, and, you know, if you have any other questions or concerns, just feel free to reach out to me, so.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Sam?
Aye.
Tom? All vote yes, Nicole?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Motion passes by zero. Uh, Kennedy Graven, uh, Charter Municipal Legal Services.
Uh, I can talk about that unless... Um, so, my name's Sam Ketchum, I, uh, introduced myself earlier, but, um, I am from Kennedy Graven, um, sorry. Nope.
Oh.
Sorry about that. Um, so, uh, I'm from Kennedy Graven, uh, there's two other attorneys from my firm that, uh, will be working with your city. Uh, Mary Teigen is, is one of them, she was previously the city attorney for several years, um, and knows some of the city staff, and, um, it's, uh, Mary, Joe and I were out in, uh, February at your city council meeting, and, um, so this is the first real full city council meeting that I've been to, and it's definitely encouraging to see so many people here that care about their city. So, uh, but the gist is that, uh, our firm will be helping your city with whatever legal issues it may have, and, um, I'll be a critical as assistance, um, and, uh, your, your city staff's going. So, um, uh, on the agenda tonight, I think is just, uh, approval of our retainer agreement, um, I believe, uh, but happy to answer any questions, uh, the council or has for me, um, and otherwise, I'm looking forward to, uh, working with your city.
Uh, the retainer is at thirty-three thousand dollars annual and, um, monthly is twenty-seven fifty, and now plenty, I know you got some...
I look back.
I look back, a couple of years, um, we've gone as high with legal fees as much as over thirty-six thousand, and we've been as low as fifteen, which was last year because with COVID being a new thing. So the, the twenty-seven fifty per month and the thirty-three thousand is not online. That is kind of nice with a retainer, because anytime we have any questions to be called and we get answered, and that's just all part of the retainer, so the only time you get billed above and beyond is if it's a special project. Union negotiations, of course, will be different. If there's a, something Jesse involved with, like with Daniel, with planning and zoning, that would be billed out of the scope of the retainer, but, um, anything, any of the normal day-to-day business all falls within the retainer.
Questions? Um, let's see here. I make a motion to approve the municipal legal services of Kennedy Graven, um, the stated amount per month and year in total of thirty-three thousand.
One second.
Further discussion? David?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
All vote yes, Tom?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Motion passes by zero. Upcoming meetings. Mining and zoning commission meeting is canceled for March 10th. The EDA meeting for March 16th is canceled.
Canceled.
Um, nothing new on the agenda. There is a special city council meeting on Monday, March 29th. Park and Rep, April 1st at 5:30. Regular city council meeting, April 12th, 2021, 7:00 p.m. Acknowledgements.
I would like to acknowledge, um, today, tomorrow, March 1st, one month anniversary of the community at Atlantic, I would like to acknowledge all those that were affected and the sheriff department for their quick response. Um, I think it's important that we not forget what had happened there. Um, I would also acknowledge all citizens for coming out tonight, um, shows that you do truly care, and like I said before, we will do our best to make it work.
Uh, just like to acknowledge the recipients of the fire department awards again, um, and also a, uh, a shout-out for International Women's Day. Without our moms, we wouldn't be here, so, you know, call your mom, tell you love her, or girlfriend, wife, however it be, so. If that's all, make a motion adjourned.
Kirby? I think you should acknowledge.
Yeah. Also like to acknowledge Deb Delker, her time with the city, um, she is officially retiring at the end of this month. Uh, hope you enjoy your retirement, we are in this year. David?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
All vote yes.
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Motion passes by zero, we're adjourned. Further...